Good evening. Welcome to the November 3 City Council meeting of the Oceanside City Council. Roll call, please, Mr. Navarro.
Mayor Sanchez.
Present.
Deputy Mayor Keim. Councilmember Jensen. Councilmember Rodriguez. Councilmember Weiss.
Thank you. Please rise. We are going to start with our invocation. We have tonight Father Charles from Prince of Peace Abbey. Is it Abbott Emeritus? Is that how you say it? Abbott Emeritus?
Yes.
Yes. Great.
As we stand and face the motto in God we trust, let us pray. Almighty God and ever-living Creator of all, we come before you this day to acknowledge and praise your goodness. Thank you for your generous gifts of life, knowledge, and love. And we ask for your continual direction in our minds and hearts, that your will be made manifest. But most of all, we ask for understanding and wisdom of governments in accomplishing what is your will and what is best for all, without overlooking the rights and cares of those who are most vulnerable and precious to you. We ask all of this in your divine name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you so much, Father Charles. Please remain standing and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. You may be seated. And first up, I see we have the San Diego Humane Society with...
Hi, everybody. Thank you, Council, for having us here today. My name is Kelly. I'm from the San Diego Humane Society. And this little guy is only about four weeks, and his name is Pugsley, and he is a cute little Abyssinian guinea pig. And he was actually born at our facility, so his mom came in, she was pregnant, and she had him, and then another one. So he is available for adoption. Guinea pigs are lovely, lovely little animals, and they're great for kids as a starter pet. They live for about five to seven years, and having a nice big enclosure for them to run around and for him to grow. And they need to eat Timothy hay and have fresh veggies every day, and they also can get scurvy because they don't produce any vitamin C, so they have to have oranges daily or bell peppers. So they are really social creatures, and they have a lot of different vocalizations for a lot of different things. So when you feed them, they know, and they will make this cute little squeaky noise. You might hear him do it. But like I said, he's available for adoption. He's one of the small pets that we have at our Oceanside facility. We have about 53 small pets right now. And campus-wide, we have about 144 rabbits, 106 guinea pigs, him being one of them, and 40 hamsters. So it's really important that we have the community spread the word about adopting small pets and adopting from a shelter in general.
Could I just stop you for just one minute? Are we having technical difficulties because I don't see the screen? Deanna, is the screen... I just want to make sure that everyone at home who's watching on KOC T is able to see this. So do we know if there's a technical difficulties going on? Oh, it's on?
It's on.
Okay, good. Okay, fantastic. So could you... Is there a way to show the cute little face there?
Where's the camera? Do we have a camera somewhere?
The camera is...
Yeah. Look at... So you can see, he's pretty small. He's about four months old. He's really social. I just met him, and he's just been sitting in my lap, letting me pet him. He's adorable. So tell your family, your friends, and your neighbors to come adopt him or any other small pet that we have at any of our campuses. And also, November is Adopt a Senior Pet. So for all of November, all of our senior pets that are seven years or older, their adoption fee is 50% off. So their usual fee is $30, so they're only $15 for a dog or a cat. So please tell your family, tell your friends, have them come in, and spread the word about guinea pigs, rabbits, rats, hamsters, all them good things. So thank you very much. That's all I got today.
Thank you so much. Thank you. We do have someone very special in the audience, Rudy. We've started the meeting, so if you can watch the meeting with us, that would be fantastic. Thank you. Okay, next, we have a proclamation. I'd like to ask the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians to come forward. And this is Mel Vernon, the captain. Yeah. And some of the tribal members. November is National Native American Heritage Month, and every November, we do celebrate here in Oceanside, the San Luis Rey Band of Lusenyo Indians. It's a tribe that was here how many years ago?
Well, they say 10,000, and we say forever.
Right. Okay. So this is something very, very special to us here in Oceanside. Growing up here, we had, obviously, the influence of our Native American community, while a landless tribe, the closest reservation continues to be Palah. But this November, 2021, is National Native American Heritage Month, and I'd like to read this proclamation. Whereas, like our great nation, the history and culture of our local community and state began with the history and culture of Native American and Indigenous peoples. And whereas we acknowledge...
Ayumcoichum.
Okay, that sounds much better. The people of the West have called the North San Diego County and Camp Pendleton region "home" for more than 10,000 years, and today, known as the Lusenyo people, are represented by seven bands, tribes: La Jolla, Palah, Palma, Pechanga, Rincon, San Luis Rey, and Soboba. And whereas the contributions of Native Americans have enhanced the freedom, prosperity, and greatness of America today, the customs and traditions of Native Americans are respected and celebrated as part of a rich legacy throughout the United States and our city of Oceanside. And whereas evidence of tribal cultural resources found throughout our region prove that the Lusenyo's have a long history and a rich culture that existed before first European contact, arrival of the Spanish missionaries, Mexican rule, and the establishment of the United States. And the Lusenyo's have survived every challenge, generation after generation, adapting to meet changing times and circumstances with great optimism. Whereas, and whereas, we celebrate our commitments to respect and preserve the rich Native American history and traditions in our city of Oceanside. And whereas the most sacred responsibility of the Lusenyo people is to preserve and protect their ancestral territory. And the city of Oceanside has been an exceptional partner to the San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians in a unified commitment to honor and protect historical and cultural sites. Now, therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Sanchez, on behalf of the city of Oceanside, do hereby proclaim November 2021 as National Native American History Month in the city of Oceanside. Continue our commitment to work with the San Luis Rey tribe in the preservation of our shared cultural heritage, and urge all citizens to observe this month with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities.
Thank you, Mayor Sanchez. And on behalf of San Luis Rey Band of Mission Indians, it's an honor to accept this proclamation. As you know, we've had 23 years of a powwow, and we've taken two years off. And so hopefully, we'll be doing a powwow coming up soon. And on behalf of... Oh, what's... This is some sage. This is my mask. That's not it. This is my book that I wrote during COVID. Mel and the Blue Arrow. It's where myth and legend and fantasy and fact come together. And that's what's... It's a San Luis Rey homegrown organic story that I live. I am a great musician. Okay, so I'd like to acknowledge my sister, Rainette, our tribal members, Roberta, excuse me, Justine, and Carol. Someone said Carla. And for all the wonderful things that they do with the basket weaving and whatnot. And also, this Saturday, November 6, we're having the Valley... Help me out. Valley Arts Festival with Studio Ace, and we're having flute players, we're having storytelling, we're having fry bread, which you only could get at our powwow, and basket weavers. And so come on down. I'd like to invite everybody to come on down, and this could be a great event, acknowledging our culture. Oh, yeah. Excuse... Thank you. We also acknowledge the fact that we have an elementary school named after Pablo Talk. Who's Pablo Talk is the question. And Pablo Talk, if you look him up, you'll find out he was a young boy born at the mission and ended up going with Father Perry to Rome, and actually was one of the first primary sources of writing the Lusenyo language down. So we're very proud of that. And also, Luis Pessat School, the other, acknowledging the Lusenyo. So thank you so much. And this Lusenyo Park, that's right. And the other thing, while we're bringing it up, you know, we'd like to have some more monuments somewhere closer downtown that acknowledges the first people, that says a little thing to help out where we actually are in the day, and acknowledgement of the people. And also, we want to have land acknowledgements. That's happening too. There's all the land of the Lusenyo's, and it's good to know where we're at in the time. It never goes away. So I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mel. And his title is captain. He basically is the leader of the tribe, and his sister is Diana. So, yes. So thank you so much, and let's give him a big hand, please. Thank you. This is something so critical, not just for the Indigenous people that were here since 10,000 years, but also for our, you know, for the city of Oceanside. This is indeed part of our culture, part of our history. And it's something that is so critical to remind our children, and, you know, through stories. Storytelling is very, very big in the culture about what we had here before and how beautiful the culture continues to be. Thank you.
And acknowledging Mother Earth that we all live on. No. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else want to... Wait, hold on. Hold on. Wait, wait, wait. Does anybody else want to say something?
Basket weaving? Not too... My name is Diana Caudell, and we are here with the Lusenyo's. And I am a basket weaver, and I've got my proteges here. I've got Rainette and Roberta. We teach a Cherokee-style basket weaving, but we also do traditional basket weaving. I sit on the board for California Indian Basket Weavers, and also with the Tribal Pesticide Program Council through EPA, because pesticides is really hard on us because we have to go out and gather. There's no really gardens that we have or anything that we have our native plants in. Plus, also, we work with Camp Pendleton, you know, regarding the archaeological sites and monitoring, and plus with the gathering and the plants that are there. Just want to say thank you to Oceanside. I was born in Oceanside. My brother was born in Oceanside. Okay. Roberta was born at Pendleton. La Jolla. La Jolla. La Jolla in San Diego. But the majority of us, you know, were born right here. And my grandmother was born here, my great-grandfather was born here in the valley, my mother was born in the valley. And my doctor, my brothers, with Dr. Kelly. If you knew about the Kellys and the old hospital up in the hill here. So I want to say thank you, which would be Noshenlovik, which means "my heart is good" because we do not have a word for "thank you" in our language. So Noshenlovik.
Thank you. And we're going to have a picture here, so... Thank you. Thank you so much.
Thank you. The city council met in closed session to discuss two litigation items. The first item is the Superior Court action Cummings versus City of Oceanside. The second item was a workers' compensation case, Michael Helszer versus City of Oceanside. The council did meet and give direction on both items, but there is no reportable action under the Brown Act at this time.
Thank you. Next item is the consent calendar items, items three through 11. Are there any requests to pull from the public?
No requests to pull any of the items from the public.
Any requests from the council? I see none. Is there a motion? There's a motion. There's a motion by Deputy Mayor Keim, second by Councilmember Jensen. Please vote.
Motion approved. Five-oh.
Thank you. Next item are our general items. Item number 12, Introduction of an Ordinance Amending Chapter 37 of the Oceanside City Code relating to Control of Well Construction, Adoption of an Urgency Ordinance, which is extraordinary. I've never seen that before, to make the amendments effective immediately for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety, which basically the request is to do the introduction and adoption in one hearing, that being today. Is that correct, Ms. Lindsay?
That is correct.
Thank you. So we do have a report by Lindsay Leahy, Principal Water Engineer.
Do we have to read the ordinance in first? Thank you, Honorable Mayor and City Council, Lindsay Leahy, with the Water Utilities Department, here tonight to describe the ordinance and the adoption of an urgency ordinance relating to control of drinking well construction. Tonight's staff is recommending that city council introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the Oceanside City Code relating to control of drinking water well construction, as well as adopt an urgency ordinance to make the amendments effective immediately for the preservation of public peace, health, and safety. The first item requires a simple majority vote, whereas the urgency ordinance requires a minimum of a fourth, fifth vote tonight. And once, if the urgency ordinance was approved tonight, upon the second reading and the waiting period for the original ordinance, then the urgency ordinance would expire. So Pure Water Oceanside is undergoing regulatory permitting currently, and this urgency ordinance is related to the permitting requirements. Division of Drinking Water and the Regional Water Quality Control Board have issued our draft permit or our tentative order for the Pure Water Oceanside project. Part of... Or currently, the project is scheduled for its permit hearing on December 8 of 2021. Currently, this tentative order contains specific and detailed requirements for the project's laboratory analysis, advanced treatment criteria, any pathogenic microorganism control, compliance and monitoring and reporting programs, operation plans, cross-connection control programs, and finally, tonight's item, the adoption of an ordinance restricting the drinking well construction. So the drinking water well construction would be restricted with this ordinance within the primary boundary around where we would be injecting water into the aquifer for Pure Water Oceanside. This primary boundary is defined by a six-month travel time of the water that's being injected under the ground surface. The ordinance would also require that the city continue coordination with the San Diego County Department of Environmental Health, who is essentially responsible for permitting of any well construction within the county. This is an overview of the pure water injection sites. So the injection wells are identified as the yellow dots labeled 1, 3, and 6. These are the three locations where Pure Water Oceanside would be injecting the advanced purified water into the aquifer. The dark purple boundary, as well as, I'm going to call them purple whiskers, shows the flow of the water within that aquifer, and the dark purple line shows the six-month flow boundary of that water within the aquifer. The ordinance for tonight's item would restrict the construction of drinking water wells within that purple boundary. That area is comprised primarily of mobile homes and single-family homes. In parallel with this, but not necessarily affected by this ordinance, we have been working with the Laguna Vista Mobile Home Community, which currently has two existing wells within that control zone. However, these wells are used to fill their on-site lakes and to provide irrigation for their landscaping on their property. So these are considered non-portable uses. Part of the regulations and the conditions for the permit of Pure Water Oceanside included, essentially formally designating the wells on that property as non-portable uses and restricting the use of drinking... Developing this for drinking water into the future. The city has been coordinating with the property owner and the property manager, as well as with the County of San Diego, to permit this property as a non-portable use site. Additionally, the city has executed an agreement with the property owner of Laguna Vista Mobile Home Community outlining the allowable uses. So this agreement does not change any existing uses for this property. They will continue to be able to fill their on-site lakes and irrigate their property with the well water, and it will not require any changes to their drinking water system either. This is, again, not necessarily affected by the ordinance tonight, but because these wells do fall within the primary boundary, we did want to identify that we have done this work in parallel. And with that, staff is recommending the introduction of the ordinance restricting the construction of drinking water wells within the primary boundary and amending Chapter 37, as well as adopting an urgency ordinance to make the amendments effective immediately. Again, the first item would require a simple majority vote, whereas the adoption of the urgency ordinance would require a minimum of a fourth, fifth vote. And I'm available for questions.
Thank you. And today, I did reach out to a few members of the residents from Laguna Vista, including the president and the vice president of the Homeowners Association. They did not have information about this, but staff was able to contact them and address the concerns, specifically what were the impacts. The word "impacts" was included in the staff report, but not really explained. And so the impacts are basically just that it cannot be used as drinking water, right?
That is correct. Those wells would never be able to be used as drinking water and would maintain their current use.
Right. Which, of course, the biggest question was, are the lakes going away in any way? And the answer was, no.
Correct. The city has no intention of restricting the use of their lakes.
I believe we do have some residents from Laguna Vista. Can you raise your hand? Yeah, we do have a couple of people here. Okay. Any questions? Any public...
Yeah, we do have one request to speak from Linda Walshall.
Okay.
Good evening, Council and Mayor. It's good to see you all again. I haven't been here for a while. Okay. When this first came up on the agenda, I believe the agenda was published last week, I was contacted as CEO of Manufactured... Sorry. Mobile Home Advisory Committee, Inc. We are now a nonprofit. And I contacted the city and spoke to not only Russ Cunningham, but I also spoke to Lindsay Leahy, and she responded in great detail and answered all of our questions. And she was also kind enough to provide us with a copy of the actual agreement. And we circulated that to the residents the same day we received it, including the HOA officers. So I don't know why they're saying they didn't have it, because we always send it to everybody that we have contact information for. The one thing that I wanted to clarify is some of the questions were the residents wanted to make certain that the water used in the lakes was not going to be replaced with recycled water, and according to Ms. Leahy, it is not. There is no change. There was no need for public notice because there's no public effect of what's going on. It's pretty much status quo. They're already not used for drinking water, so they won't be in the future. The one thing I did want to bring to everyone's attention is that the name of the entity that owns Laguna Vista in the agreement is actually misstated. And are we still doing the overhead thing here? I can show you. It's a small change, but it might be important. And in the agreement, it says MCH instead of that. And it's also not spelled out under the signature line, so I just thought I better bring that to your attention, that that needs to be corrected. And that's all I have. As far as I know, the residents are satisfied, and everybody's okay with it.
Thank you. So with that correction, MCH versus MHC or MHC versus MCH?
We'll look into that. That's not before you, that agreement.
Right. Okay. So there are no other public comments, and before us, we have... We need to have two separate votes. One, to introduce the ordinance. And then after that, we would need a second motion to adopt the urgency ordinance, which would be basically the second reading happening here today, or just waiving the second reading.
If adopted, it would become effective today.
Yep. Okay. So I have first, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Just a quick question. Currently, the only property owners that are affected is... That have current wells is the Laguna Vista community. Is that correct? That have a couple wells?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Honorable Mayor, City Council. Yes, that is correct. The only wells within this primary zone is Laguna Vista with their non-portable wells.
Got it. And then what about a survey of... Is there any properties that exist today or land that exists today that has the right to dig a well that would be affected by this ordinance?
Thank you for that question. To my knowledge, I believe any property could drill a well within their property in this area. However, that well water use would be restricted within those property boundaries, and that would be up to the property owner to determine if that was cost-effective.
Got it. So there's no restriction on private property rights on the ability to dig a well on their own property?
As long as it was not a drinking water well, correct. They would not be restricted to drill a drinking water well with this ordinance.
Okay. Can you explain the difference of a well for irrigation and a well for drinking? I've dug a well, and it's the same process. The only difference is if you test the water and it's drinkable, you can drink it, or you hook up our, you know, reverse osmosis system and filter it into your home. So how do they determine the difference from a city or county level, and how do they oversee that?
So similar to the process that's going on at Laguna Vista, we are working with the County of San Diego to effectively make this a non-portable use site. So this would require a cross-connection test to ensure that the water is only connected to the irrigation system. This requires purpurizing, what we call purpurizing, so purple irrigation head signage. It requires physical separation of an irrigation line from a portable water line to ensure that there's no mistaken cross-connection between the non-portable water and the drinking water. So they would have to go through that process as well, which is what is going on at Laguna Vista currently. They are purpurizing, and that is all happening on that property.
Got it. Okay. Yeah, my biggest concern with this was that it doesn't affect private property rights in the future of owners who, you know, 20, 30, 40 years from now, want to dig a well, that they'll have that ability. But what you're saying is if they do, the restriction is you just cannot drink the water. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Do I have a motion? Deputy Mayor Keim? So you have a motion to introduce the ordinance. Is there a second? I'll second the motion. So I don't see any further lights.
I'll need to title...
Yes, correct.
This is the Introduction of an Ordinance of the City Council of the City of Oceanside amending Chapter 14 of Oceanside City Code, Section 14.13, regarding well construction within the Pure Water Oceanside Primary Zone of injection.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Please vote. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. We need a motion to adopt the urgency ordinance.
So moved.
Moved by Deputy Mayor Keim. Seconded by Councilmember Jensen. No other lights, please vote.
I'll go ahead and title. This is an urgency ordinance of the City of Oceanside, I'm sorry, of the City Council of the City of Oceanside, amending Chapter 14 of the Oceanside City Code by amending Section 14.13 regarding well construction within the pure water Oceanside primary zone of injection.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. And in the future, if we could get public, more information to the public, like the homeowners, residents, that would be, that would be great.
Thank you. We will.
Thank you. Okay, we're on item number 13. That is authorization to award a contract to Interfaith Community Services for tenant-based rental assistance. Approval of a professional services agreement in the amount of $1.15 million effective November 1, 2021, through October 31, 2022. And authorization for the city manager to execute the agreement. We're going to begin with a report by Cecilia Barandia Ran, management analyst. Hi, Cecilia.
Hi. Good evening, Mayor, City Councilmembers. We're here tonight to enter or to award a contract for a professional service agreement with Interfaith Community Services for tenant-based rental assistance. Staff recommends that the City Council award this contract to Interfaith Community Services for tenant-based rental assistance program. As the mayor mentioned, it's in the amount of $1,114,851 to start effective December 1 through November 30 of the following year, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. At the June 30, City Council amended the first fiscal year 1920 annual action plan to accept and appropriate our initial CDBGCV allocation for imminent COVID-related activities. And at that time, we also allocated $1,014 for home tenant-based rental assistance programs to address housing stability once households came out of the pandemic. Implementation of the TBRA program was deferred to implement RFPs for the various food distribution programs, emergency hotel motel voucher programs, and the city-administered emergency rental assistance and utility program. Due to the unexpected length of the health pandemic, most of these short-term programs have continued for the past year and a half. COVID-19 program has significant timeline issues. We, at this point, have expended approximately 80% of our COVID-19 funds and are on track to be expended fully by the end of this fiscal year. We anticipate expending all before the deadline date. The County of San Diego started their emergency rental program late in spring of '21. City staff has been able to transition and refer eligible applicants and households still in need of rental arrears to the county program and also for forecasted rents. As the city and county transition into a recovery phase, staff is ready to implement the prevention component to address households coming out of the COVID financial setbacks, the tenant-based rental assistance program. To help these families stabilize their monthly income, this intervention program is going to be proceeding at a full-speed staff. We posted an RFP to implement the TBRA program. Marketing efforts for the TBRA RFP included local agencies such as North County Lifeline, Interfaith Community Services, Community Resource Center. We marketed through the regional task force for the homeless, the Alliance. It was posted for over four weeks. We hosted a technical assistance call as part of that process, and we received two proposals. One was from Interfaith Community Services. The second was from the Community Resource Center. Upon evaluation of both proposals, staff requested some modifications to address some of our concerns. Interfaith modified their proposal to address our concerns. The Community Resource Center removed themselves from consideration. Staff requests that the council award the contract to Interfaith Community Services. So what is TBRA program? Basically, tenant-based rental assistance is going to be referred from the housing authority, from Interfaith Community Services themselves, and 211 San Diego. Households to receive this assistance need to live or work in Oceanside, and their household income has to be under 60% of the area median, which for a family of four is 72.7 a year. What is the assistance for the clients? They're going to be having some case management to address their housing issues, try to get them into more stable housing environment. If they need financial or other kind of issues, that'll be done with the case management assistance. They'll be provided rent and utility assistance up to 12 months per household and a security deposit if needed. So how is this going to operate? This is the breakdown of the budget. You can see personnel costs are at 10% of the budget. There's an indirect admin fee. Indirect costs represents the expense of doing business that are not readily attributed to a particular project or activity. Interfaith's indirect rate is negotiated with the Department of Labor and is at 11.32. When we issued out all the city RFPs for CDBGCV programming, we capped the indirect rate to 10%. The miscellaneous items are renting utilities, training to do household inspections, travel mileage, and office supplies. For program evaluation and reporting, we're going to be receiving quarterly progress and financial reports, monthly invoicing. We will be meeting with Interfaith midstream to evaluate the program's participant success level in terms of their housing stability. And if, at that point, there's discussions in terms of they need longer than the six- or 12-month window, then we may come back to council at that point to see if, to extend that agreement for a second year, which is the maximum allowed under the funding source. And again, staff recommends that the City Council award this contract to Interfaith Community Services for tenant-based rental assistance in the amount of $1,114,851, and authorize the city manager to execute the agreement. Staff is available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Cecilia. And I do recall the council put rental assistance as a very high priority for CDBG and COVID-related assistance. Are there any requests to speak on this item from the public?
There are no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, back to the council. Do I have a motion? Councilmember Rodriguez?
I would like to have just some clarification. So is this an extension of a contract? Or this is a new contract? We're moving on in a new program? We're moving on with Interfaith?
This is a new program and a new contract. We have not done tenant-based rental assistance program, so this is brand-new to us.
And it's funded?
Through our federal home dollars.
Correct, the federal home dollars. Very good. And so we haven't invented this program, obviously. This is something that is, other cities are doing, other jurisdictions are doing. Is that correct?
Only cities that receive home dollars directly are Oceanside, National City, Chula Vista, and the County of San Diego. Smaller cities do not receive it and cannot do this. But yes, it's modeled on Chula Vista's program.
Okay, got it. And since we do have a housing authority, we're subcontracting this program out, but aren't these tasks, items, that our housing authority staff are trained to do already?
I'm going to defer that question to our director.
Okay.
Absolutely correct, Councilmember Rodriguez. We do have staff that operates the Section 8 Housing Choice Voucher Program. Currently, at our staffing levels that we have today, we're not able to provide that service. Our caseload, we have about 1,600 vouchers, caseload of about 400 cases per housing specialist. In addition to the tenant-based rental assistance program, the one thing that Interfaith does provide is the case management, the aspect of providing supportive services to those households to stabilize them, to get them into a place where, after one or two years, that they are able to sustain their housing over the long term. Whereas in the Section 8 Rental Assistance Program, that's looked upon as a very permanent rental assistance program. And those folks, maybe a senior on limited income, would need that assistance for the life of their tenancy.
So are we currently reviewing applicants for this, for this same sort of rental assistance and managing those cases with salaried staff from Interfaith that we currently pay right now from previous contracts?
We are, in terms of, we have Interfaith staff onsite assisting with housing navigation for our homeless population, but not exactly running or looking at cases for rental assistance.
Okay.
Hopefully, that answered the question. And we do have Interfaith here as well, if there are any questions directly for them.
Yeah, I have a question for our city manager, Ms. Larson. So subcontracting this out to Interfaith, you think is the highest and best use of these funds versus managing it internally? Being the third-largest city in the county and, you know, managing this program to ensure that it's operating correctly? You think this is the best use of these funds?
Councilmember Rodriguez, Mayor and councilmembers, as Leilani explained, because of the current caseload of our current staff, we can't take on this additional task. We will be providing oversight of the Interfaith contract. And because it is short-term in duration, it also doesn't make sense to bring on permanent city staff to do a program that will be limited in terms. So I do think that this is effective use of city resources.
Thank you. I'd like to move approval.
All right, I'd like to second that motion. Any other comments? Looks like none. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. I'd like to move on to item number 17, advanced written request to speak. That's by Larry Karagazian. Is Mr.? I hope I didn't butcher your name, sir.
Karagazian.
Karagazian, okay.
Well, good evening, Mayor, councilmembers, city officials. My name is Larry Karagazian. I'm here with my wife Eden and a few concerned neighbors. I greatly appreciate having the chance to address you for five minutes. I also appreciate the calls I've gotten from Oceanside Transportation Department and Sergeant Buffy, both of which explain the history of the issues I'm going to explain in the neighborhood that I'm a part of. Also, the traffic calming program and what has happened to that. So in a short amount of time, let me go through it. We've lived in San Diego, I personally, since the '70s, seen a lot of changes, have lived in quite a few communities, were currently homeowners on Angelina Road and Bella Colina with the neighbors sitting over there. For those unfamiliar, Angelina Road, where we live, intersects Woodview Drive on the eastern end and Bella Colina on the western end. And the street itself is a pretty steep hill. I have some photos of it that I'll just leave here, if you'd like to review it, that shows specifically the intersection. I'd like to have Mr. Newton and Gross stand up, our good neighbors, who are here to also show their concern. You all have a lot to do in running a city this size. And this may seem like a small problem in relationship to that, but I've always believed communities start with order, safety, and integrity, and especially in Oceanside that's seen a lot of development through the years. Here are the two issues. Number one, and in the order of importance as we see it, failure to stop at either stop sign on either end of the street. What times? On a daily basis, I live four houses down from the intersection, during 7:30 to 9:00. And at the end of the day, and school pickup time is when these infractions are occurring. I've personally recorded around 75% of all drivers, not even close to stopping on either end of the street. And that includes mail trucks and city workers, quite frankly. It is not just, you know, quote-unquote, "the kids." I, myself, walk miles in the neighborhood at least four times a week, have almost been hit. I've seen, witnessed firsthand, the same with people walking their dogs. So it's not a slow roll. It's ignoring the sign altogether as if it wasn't even there. Traffic here has increased. We know from history what caused it on this Angelina to Bella Colina route and vice versa. It was a blocking off of the nearby street called Panorama Ridge, which some of you may be familiar with. And that increased the number of vehicles, and therefore more people breaking the law and creating an unsafe environment. So I see this firsthand, and so do our neighbors. Number two, the speed on Angelina is 25 miles an hour. I commend the 60% of the drivers who follow that, but it's the 40% who don't. And I'm talking 35 miles an hour or more, so 10 over, not three over or five over. A number of months ago, while speaking to law enforcement who kindly parked right at Bella Colina, in a matter of that 20 minutes that I was speaking to them, the officer left three to four times to ticket people. So even despite traffic calming programs being on hold, drivers need to start seeing that somebody is watching this neighborhood. This is what we're looking for. Number one, at least twice a month for one hour during those rush hour times, have an officer park at the northwest corner of Bella Colina and Angelina. We believe, based on our firsthand experience, this would be an easy revenue generator with the tickets written, fortunately or unfortunately. Number two, a radar trailer placed halfway down the hill on Angelina to alert drivers. In my view, if it's effective, this trailer would not data log a whole lot of speeding, because people would see it and slow down perhaps before they even got recorded. Sergeant Buffy has put us on the city list to have this done. I think we're 10th in line, so I appreciate that. So the safety of adult and child pedestrians and pets has been compromised. Unfortunately, some neighbors have started to believe this is a cultural thing, meaning offenders who don't care about traffic rules. That is at least in part creating this. Just this morning, as I was walking, a kid blasted through that stop sign. His window was open, probably so he could enjoy his illegal exhaust system. I was, of course, given a number-one salute when I told him to slow down. So we're frankly all tired of this, and we'd like to see something done about it. And I appreciate in advance you helping to mitigate this safety issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. We do have Mr. Jonathan Borrego in the back, who is with the city manager's office. We also have our chief here, chief of police. So if you would like to meet with them outdoors, out of the chambers, to have a discussion, that would be great.
Very good. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, next are items, communications from public regarding items. Not on the agenda. How many do we have?
We have three speakers.
Okay, let's get started.
All right. Kathy Kinnane, to be followed by Peter Gross, to be followed by Richard Newton.
Good evening, Mayor Sanchez, City Councilmembers. I'm back. I have a very important announcement to make. There are only 23 days left until we're all going to meet in front of the Civic Center to get our walk and run in on Thanksgiving morning. And I'm Kathy Kinnane, Race Director of the Oceanside Turkey Trot and the Move Your Feet Before You Eat Foundation Executive Director. We are back to celebrate the Oceanside Turkey Trot Live in the city of Oceanside. It starts at the Civic Center and finishes at the pier. And we expect to have about 7,500 runners and walkers. And for those of you who are worried about supply chain issues, our medals arrive today. So we will have finisher medals for those participants that sign up and participate.
Got to have that medal.
Got to have that medal. And we are looking forward to seeing everyone down there on Thanksgiving morning. So people always ask me, what is the Turkey Trot? Well, we have a five-mile run that starts at 6:45 for the runners. And then we have a 5K, which is 3.1 miles, for walkers and runners, and of course, youth races. The highlight of the event is we have fabulous live entertainment on the course and a side-splitting costume contest that has a $300 prize purse. For those that are, of you that are interested, this event draws from 46 states and 460 cities every year. And already, we have a family coming in from Switzerland. So it's a very popular vacation destination. An interesting thing, if you know anything about Google Analytics, like number four on Google Analytics is "Visit San Diego." So we're very excited that we're attracting so many travelers to this event. Our team competition is one of the most popular items. And of course, we're hoping that the city's going to have a really big team this year. Hint, hint. Hint, hint. The Austin Weiss Foundation is coming back, and they expect to have a very large team this year. Something really unique about our Turkey Trot is that we have actually four division in the age group prizes. We have men's and women's, but we also have a local competition and for non-residents. So there's something for everybody at this event. The proceeds benefit 90 schools and their clubs, and some of our top beneficiaries are Radies Children's and the Boys and Girls Club. If you register as a group of three or more people, you get $3 off each registration, and that deal expires on November 10. So let's register today at oceanturkeytrot.com. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Peter Gross, to be followed by Richard Newton.
Good evening, Mayor, councilpeople. My name is Peter Gross. I'm a resident and a homeowner at 5156 Bella Colina Street. This is immediately adjacent to the intersection of Angelina in District 4. I live right at that intersection. I have a front row seat. I live with my wife Jasmine, a hometown girl of Oceanside, and our four-year-old daughter. I'm a proud and concerned Oceansider, and I've come here today to ask you for help. I have to be honest, I'm a little sad that the police chief stepped out because this does fall in the realm of law enforcement, and I would just appeal to you to please support us in our endeavor of making our community safer. I want to paint the picture for you, and I know that my neighbor did this already. I'm a retired battalion chief from San Francisco Fire. I've spent, as a result of my retirement, I get to spend much of my day at home in Oceanside, enjoying the lifestyle that it provides and chasing around a four-year-old. I have a front row seat of what's going on in front of my house as a result of this, and as previously described by my neighbor Larry, there's a three-way stop right in front of our house. I can literally touch the stop sign from our property line. And throughout the day, and I should say at the stop sign, and unfortunately, his pictures didn't go up, but there's foliage and landscape that make this a blind intersection. And what's occurred there is, and I think what's happened is, and it was identified by my wife, a local, is that this intersection has become a thoroughfare, people cutting through from Vista, coming up Temple Heights and using the neighborhood streets to drop down into Oceanside. And what occurs at this stop sign is basically throughout the day, a lack of any respect for the stop sign. People roll through it at full speed, and it's just a recipe for a disaster waiting to happen. It happens throughout the day, but especially during commute hours. But it happens every day, and this conduct is putting my neighbors and my family in danger, as well as other motorists. There's many bicyclists in the area. It's a walking community. People are out there, and the motorists are really having a full disrespect for the safety of us and of our laws. OPD has been requested twice by me, and they have sent out a patrolman there, and each time, that person's efforts are fruitful. They're giving out citations, but then they disappear again, that there isn't regular enforcement at that intersection. So there is a problem. It's confirmed by OPD and their citations. And I'll just finish by saying the solution is dependent on law enforcement having a regular presence at that intersection, a regular, an intermittent enforcement, basically, on a regular basis. So I ask you to support this and help us keep our neighborhoods safe. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. And they are still out there talking. I can see them if you'd like to join and add some more information. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Richard Newton.
Mayor, members of the city council, and the public, I would like to convey my concerns today regarding the city's water smart meter program and its hourly readings. The first concern is privacy. There's a great deal of personal information that can be gleaned from real-time hourly data that cannot be determined from a monthly meter read. Let me give just one example. Suppose a resident uses the toilet multiple times during the night. From hourly readings and the amount of water used, we know that the toilet was flushed multiple times. This suggests a health condition such as diabetes, overactive bladder, or prostate problem. We also know if low-flow toilets are in use. All of that information, one, that the home is occupied, two, that there is a health issue, and three, what type of toilets are present, jumps out of just those few nightly readings. This is intrusive, and yet the city wants 24 readings per day or 720 readings per month. This is wrong. We can debate if somebody will abuse this data, but we do know that somebody wants this data because $20 million was spent on the smart meter program to get it. The second concern is security. Real-time hourly readings indicate activity or inactivity, and keep in mind that automatic landscape watering can be easily identified and discounted. Posted on the internet, this data can be compromised and can show inactivity in a home that is unoccupied, especially for a prolonged period of time such as being away on vacation. This raises security concerns and negates precautions such as lights on timers that give the appearance of being occupied. It is highly inappropriate to collect or post this data online against the homeowner's wishes and may cause a liability for the city. The third concern is government overreach. Smart meters do not sense leaks in the city's mains, but downstream in the homeowner's private property. This program, in other words, subjects private property to hourly government performance tests forevermore. This is highly intrusive and un-American. I am told that the city does not want my personal information and has no plans to mandate repairs, but that can change under future leadership. Perhaps the city will decide to raise revenue by selling my information or decide to start mandating costly repairs for minor, non-problematic leaks. After all, this data is being collected for a reason. The smart meter program supports this dystopian scenario, and the public needs to see the privacy policies and end-user license agreements for this program. Though saving water is a laudable goal, it does not justify hourly inspections of private property. All of these arguments, however, lose merit if the city allows an opt-out, meaning no smart meter installed. Please provide an opt-out for those of us who do not wish to partake in this program, much as SDGNE respects its customers' wishes and allows opt-outs from its smart meter program. The role of the city is to provide, to supply water, and receive payment in return. It is not to scrutinize use. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other requests to speak?
That concludes the request to speak.
Okay, thank you. We do have a couple of minutes, and I just want to say happy birthday to our city manager, Deanna Larson. It's a birthday today. Trooper coming into a city council meeting and not calling it, and not sick, but, you know, happy birthday, day off. So happy birthday, Deanna. We're going to take a couple of minutes, so come back a minute or two after six. Thank you. We are now on item number 14, and this begins the three, we have three public hearing items timed certain items. So first one, item number 14 is introduction of an ordinance to amend Article 12 of the downtown zoning ordinance to modify downtown residential density provisions and adoption of a resolution to establish the amended text and transit overlay district as modified by the California Coastal Commission as part of the implementation plan, or the IP, of the local coastal program. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from councilmembers regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
For this particular item tonight, staff only. Staff and the public.
No public?
Staff.
Thank you. Mr. Navarro, Mr. Clerk, do we have any correspondence and/or petitions?
We have not received any correspondence or petition on this item.
Okay, thank you. We're going to go ahead and begin the testimony with Scott Nightengale, our senior planner.
Thank you. Good evening, members of the public, council. I'm Scott Nightengale from the Planning Division, here to present Agenda Item Number 14 for the introduction of an ordinance, a previously approved ordinance by the city council to amend Article 12 of the downtown zoning ordinance to modify the downtown residential density provisions and adoption of a resolution to establish amended texts and transit overlay district as modified by the California Coastal Commission as part of the implementing plan of the local coastal program. A little background on this item. On August 21, 2019, city council adopted the changes, which allowed for the density limits for mixed-use developments within the downtown district. The previously approved amendments involve several revisions, as noted here. It was an expansion of the TOD boundaries from an eighth of a mile to a half a mile, addition of mixed-use developments as allowed under a conditional use permit process within the downtown district, revisions to the maximum density for mixed-use developments from 43 dwelling units per acre to a general cap of 5,500 within the downtown, and the requirement of residential and mixed-use development projects to comply with the city's inclusionary housing regulations. My colleague Shannon Vitale is actually bringing in item 15, which will note this. Revisions to the inclusionary tandem parking from permitted through a conditional use permit to prevented by right for residential districts. And on October 2019, city council adopted the changes to Article 12, and they were sent to the California Coastal Commission for their review. And it wasn't till September 10, 2021, that the Coastal Commission approved of the amendments with two suggested modifications, which I will go into. The modifications are here. First modification here was to add the language "east of the railway corridor," so all the bold and underlined text is what Coastal Commission has asked as modifications. This is basically for all TOD developments to allow on-street parking to be counted as required as east of the railway. Item two is a reduction of parking by 25% for east of the railway. And lastly, this item here is for public parking west of the railway corridor to be replaced at a one-to-one ratio, like I said, if it's west of the downtown. And this is the text that they added to Section 1232D of the Downtown Ordinance Regulation KK. Kind of a lot of text here, so I'll break it down. The first paragraph here, where it states density will be limited, this is basically density will be limited to not impact traffic circulation. The second line item here, or paragraph, regarding identifying specific intersections within the downtown, this is for traffic monitoring purposes to remain and maintain public access to the coast. The second, I'm sorry, third paragraph, traffic mitigation measures, list traffic mitigation measures to ensure level of service does not drop below Level D, or mitigation will be needed for any mixed-use development. And the other item here, funding mechanisms, we will identify, or identify any funding mechanisms for any transit-oriented development, basically to fund any future measures within the downtown. This could be anything from shuttle service, or stop signs, or any type of traffic calming devices. And lastly, the traffic monitoring condition is for any project that is coming in for a mixed-use transit-oriented development, the city staff will provide an annual report to California coastal staff of the existing density, traffic impacts, and measurable changes in the overall traffic, parking conditions within the downtown. So this will be something that the city will have to do on an annual basis. So with that, staff recommends that city council introduce this ordinance to amend Article 12 of the downtown zoning ordinance to modify the downtown residential density provisions and adopt the resolution to adopt the modified text from the California Coastal Commission as the implementing plan of the local coastal program. We are asking for an introduction of an ordinance and also adoption of the resolution. This concludes our presentation. I'd be happy to answer questions. Thanks.
Thank you. This is the time for the public to speak on this item. You do not have to have signed a slip to request to speak in advance. You can actually get up and approach the podium and speak for up to three minutes, providing your name. Does anybody from the public wish to speak that are currently here? I see no one rising. Were there any requests to speak, Mr. Navarro?
There was one from Ginny Golden, but you put it in the heading. Was it for this item or for a later item?
For a later item.
Okay, all right, thank you. Just clarifying that. No, we have no requests to speak on this item.
Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and bring this back to the council. I see Councilmember Weiss.
Yes, I have a question for staff. In the suggested modifications, they specifically identify LOS for the traffic, not VMT. They specifically want LOS?
That is correct. They are going with LOS, even though that all of the entitlement reviews are under VMT. We still provide them with the LOS within downtown.
Thank you. And I mean, I see that there's like a page and a half of modifications, so I take it the two years through coastal, we were on their expedited list. I'll move approval, staff recommendation.
Okay, Councilmember Rodriguez.
Yeah, I just wanted to as well comment. I know I've been following up with staff the last two years on what is taking so long, and from my understanding, staff has done everything they could to push it through without, you know, upsetting anybody that we don't want to upset to ensure we move this forward. Are we only making the requested changes, or are there additional overlapping changes that the city is adding in this to accommodate the Coastal Commission's concerns? Like, are we just doing exactly what they're asking for, or are we going above and beyond what they're asking for?
Councilmember Rodriguez, yes, we're just, exactly what I stated in the presentation is exactly what we're asking, what the modifications were.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. There are no other requests to speak. I just want to say, we are currently experiencing real problems with respect to parking. So increasing densities and then reducing parking requirements is such a difficult thing to be asking for, especially within the coastal zone. And then to be able to count parking with tandem parking as a right just, I think, exasperates that whole situation. There is an appeal that has been, that is being pursued at this time, mostly having to do with parking, and I think as a council, we ought to be looking at ways to make it safer for our community as well as, you know, maintain the ability to be able to have walkable communities, especially so close to the downtown. So I am going to be registering a no vote here. So let's vote.
I'll need to title, Mayor. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Article 12, Section 1232 of the downtown zoning ordinance to establish revised regulations for mixed-use developments with modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission.
And adoption of the resolution, right?
Yeah, I don't need to title that. You have a resolution before you, but that doesn't require titling.
Okay, thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next, no, I'm sorry. Please do my no.
Oh, 4-1. Oh, let's do it. One more time. Revote.
Right. My apologies. The middle one. The middle button.
Councilmember Jensen? Motion approved, 4-1. Sanchez, no.
Thank you. Okay, next public hearing item is item number 15. It's introduction of an ordinance to amend Articles 10C and 31 of the city's zoning ordinance in Chapter 14C of the Oceanside City Code and adoption of a resolution establishing the amendment text of Articles 10C and 31 and Chapter 14C pertaining to inclusionary housing as part of the implementing, yeah, document of the local coastal program, and that's the, to incorporate modifications as suggested by the California Coastal Commission. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from the councilmembers regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff.
No contact. Thank you, and I'm going to ask Mr. Navarro, our clerk, city clerk, to if we have had any correspondence and/or petitions.
We have not had any correspondence or petition on this item.
All right, so now we're at testimony, beginning with Shannon Vitale, Associate Planner for the city of Oceanside.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening, Honorable Mayor Sanchez, City Council. I'm Shannon Vitale, Associate Planner with the Development Services Department. I'm here tonight to discuss Agenda Item 15 regarding inclusionary housing provisions and reinserting language into the ordinance as suggested by the California Coastal Commission. Staff is recommending that the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Articles 10C and 31 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 14C of the city code to incorporate my and 31 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 14C of the city code to incorporate modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission and adopt a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the city's local coastal program. On September 9th, 2020, city council adopted Phase 1 of inclusionary housing ordinance. It was to amend Chapter 14C. On June 10th, the Coastal Commission approved the ordinance revisions with modifications to reinsert language previously adopted by city council but inadvertently omitted from a subsequent update to the ordinance. They also recommended including the deletion of a provision that was previously approved by city council but never submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification. As described in the staff report, the ordinance before you tonight does not include any additional text changes to the zoning ordinance or municipal code that were not previously reviewed and approved by the city council. The first modification is to reinsert language that requires any increase in height limits granted for inclusionary housing to be consistent with the visual resource policies of the local coastal program. The proposed text is shown on this slide in bold, italic, underline. The city council adopted this language in 2017, and the zoning ordinance was updated at that time. The second modification, shown here in bold, italic, underline at the bottom of the slide, is to reinsert language that requires any decrease in parking granted for inclusionary housing projects to be consistent with the public access policies of the local coastal program. The city council adopted this language in 2017 as well. The third modification is to certify the deletion of Article 14C3 of the city code. The city council adopted an ordinance in 2019 to delete this section, but it was never submitted to the Coastal Commission for certification. As I mentioned earlier, the three suggested modifications do not propose any changes to the zoning ordinance or municipal code that were not previously approved. This effort is to correct the inadvertent omissions that occurred as part of the comprehensive zoning ordinance update in 2018. As such, staff does not have any concerns with reinserting the language as suggested by the Coastal Commission. It should be noted that these modifications are not associated with a substantive update to Chapter 14C that's currently underway by staff. In conclusion, staff is recommending the city council introduce an ordinance to amend Articles 10C and 31 of the zoning ordinance and Chapter 14C of the city code and adopt a resolution establishing the amended text as part of the implementing document of the local coastal program to incorporate modifications as suggested by the Coastal Commission. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you. Any requests to speak?
We do not have any registered requests to speak on this item.
Thank you. This is a time for public comment on this item. If you wish to speak on this item, you heard something and you'd like to go ahead and give us your input, you can get up and approach the podium and speak for up to three minutes, giving your name. You don't have to have filed a request to speak previously, previous to that. And I see no one rising, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and go to the council members. Councilmember Rodriguez.
I want to read a paragraph that I appreciate staff inserted in here and was referenced at the end. These modifications to the inclusionary housing provisions are not associated with a separate project, which consists of a comprehensive update to Chapter 14C. This was an item that I sat down with staff and the private development community, including affordable housing developers, on how can we build more affordable housing and update our policies to reflect the process that will create more local affordable housing. And so, I moved on a council agenda item that we've seen one phase of, which is referenced, and I'm looking forward to future phases of, which is, from my perspective, we're kicking the can down the road on this. I really think this is important. I know we have a lot of things going on as a city, but we have a lot of developments coming through that would benefit from updates to our 14C inclusionary housing guidelines. And so, I would just ask as a part of my motion, not modifying the motion, but just an out-loud request, that we really prioritize that and get the second-phase language modifications or at least begin the outreach to the development community so we can begin building more affordable units. Thank you. I move approval on this item.
Okay. Councilmember Rodriguez is moving staff's recommendation. Is there a second?
One second.
Okay, there's a second by councilmember Jensen. Please title.
Thank you. And we do have a resolution, but I will not be titling that. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city council of the city of Oceanside amending Oceanside zoning ordinance, Articles 10C and 31 and Chapter 14C of the Oceanside City Code to establish revised inclusionary housing regulations with modifications suggested by the California Coastal Commission.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 5-0.
Thank you. Next public hearing item is item number 16, and that is introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the city code establishing water use, user rates, and external water provider charge increases. I'm going to go ahead and open this public hearing and request disclosures from the council members here on the dais regarding constituent contacts and correspondence.
Staff, and we've received several emails and letters.
Staff and, I think, we received, the city clerk's office, we received, what, 22 rejections or 20, what are they?
Protests.
Protests, excuse me. 22 protest official, okay, thank you.
I think he was going to report that as, after we do this. Yes, yes, similar. I've had some conversations with staff as well as having received various emails protesting the rates.
Staff, and emails.
Staff, public.
Thank you. And Mr. Navarro, at this time, do you have any correspondence and/or petitions to present?
The city clerk's office received a total of six protests against the water rate and one in favor of the water rate, however, in regards to the water meter, we did receive 22 protests against the water meter, but this item is specifically regarding the water rate.
Okay. So, we are then going to begin testimony with Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director. Ms. Dale?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and council members. Carrie Dale, Water Utilities Director, here to talk about item number 16, water user rates and external water provider charges. Joining me this evening is Alex Bugmi. On my left, he's with Corillo Engineers. He works with us annually to develop our rates and is available for questions after the presentation. Tonight's action is to introduce an ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the city code by establishing water user rates as well as external water provider charge increases. The public process for these increases follows the calendar shown here. It includes distribution of a Proposition 218 notice, which requires an agency to provide written notice by mail of a proposed fee or charge to the record owner of each identified parcel. Those notices went out from August 1st to September 14th, and they were mailed to customers. This evening is the public hearing, and should council provide approval, rates would be effective January 1st of 2022 as well as January 21st of 2023. Tonight's action is to approve pass-through costs from the San Diego County Water Authority as well as the Metropolitan Water District of Southern California and approve a cost adjustment for the watershed protection program. There is no wastewater rate increase considered this evening. There is no city waste service fee change considered this evening, and there is no action regarding the automated metering program this evening. This slide just demonstrates what pass-throughs mean to a city like Oceanside or a water provider. We receive water from the Wholesale Water Agency Metropolitan Water District, which is shown in the upper left here. They in turn pass their costs to the San Diego County Water Authority, who pass their costs to the city and onto the customer. This past year, the city did receive a rebate in regards to litigation between the Water Authority and Metropolitan Water District. That rebate was in the amount of approximately $1.5 million. City council provided direction to staff to use that rebate in addition to reserves and apply those to any internal increases. In addition, the following year, fiscal year 2223, an additional $1.7 million will be used for reserves. Tonight's action also contemplates an increase of nine cents per unit of water used to fund watershed protection program activities. Pass-through increases from the Metropolitan Water District include the readiness-to-serve charge, which are charged on a per-meter basis. In 2022, there's actually a decrease of 36 cents per meter, and that's associated with the Water Authority decreasing a rate component related to the quantification settlement agreement, which is the purchase of water supplies from the Imperial Irrigation District. The following year, there is a small increase, two cents per meter. The San Diego County Water Authority has an infrastructure access charge increase of 54 cents per meter equivalent, and in the following year, 13 cents per meter. For single-family residential customers, we've provided a couple scenarios here based on the amount of water used. It varies from 72 cents per month to $2.34 per month. The chart here on the left shows a family that would be using six units of water, and in contrast on the right, 24 units of water. This particular chart shows multifamily residential rates, and it's shown per dwelling unit and varies between 31 cents to 81 cents per dwelling unit per month, for those using three and a half units a month to nine units per month. And for commercial and industrial users, these scenarios show between 10 as well as 40 units of water used per month, varies between 87 cents and $3.57 increase per month. Each year, we do comparisons to other agencies in the region. In 2022, the regional average for the San Diego region is $88.73. In comparison, Oceanside's rate is approximately $11 less than that regional average at $77.43. And this comparison shows a user, a single-family user, using 10 units of water every month. Looking five years into the future, we have a chart here showing what that looks like for water and sewer rates for 2022 and 2023. There's a net zero impact on internal rates. Of course, we are recommending the pass-through of the wholesale water rates. Looking forward to the year 2024 through 2026, we are anticipating a 3% increase on the water rates and a 2% increase on sewer rates. For this upcoming year, for the period between January as well as June 2022, should the increases be approved, this would generate an additional $531,000 in revenues. A full year of those revenues is a little over $1.2 million. Staff is recommending introducing an ordinance amending Chapter 37 of the city code by establishing water user rates and external water provider charge increases. And with that, both Mr. Bugmi and I are available to answer your questions.
Thank you very much. This is a time for public comment on this item. Do we have any requests to speak? People who have submitted slips.
Yes, we do. Ginny Golden.
One person?
One person, but this is a public hearing as well.
Yeah, right. I was going to, but we only have one.
One registered request to speak.
Okay, thank you.
Other one?
Hello. My name is Ginny Golden. I'm an Oceanside resident and have been for about 30 years. I didn't realize that today's consideration was more for the rates, which sound reasonable as passes to me. For future consideration of the council, though, I would like to state that the hourly metered water readings, I would like to have an opt-out to that program. The purpose of it appears to be to help the consumer in their responsible use of water. If it's a program that's designed to help me, I would like to be able to say, "Thank you, but no thank you. I'm already responsibly monitoring my water without some external entity doing that." And that concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. This is a time to speak on this item. This item is specifically regarding water user rates and external water provider charge increases. That's from the Water Authority and the County Water Authority and the Metropolitan Water District. So, very, very specifically as to this item, are there any other requests to speak? I see no one jumping out of their seats, so I'm going to go ahead and close this portion of the public hearing and come back to the council for a motion.
I move approval.
Okay. Motion by Deputy Mayor Keim to approve, that is, to introduce the ordinance, and I'll go ahead and second that motion. I'll ask the city attorney to title the ordinance.
Thank you. This is the introduction of an ordinance of the city of Oceanside amending Oceanside City Code, Chapter 37, establishing water user rate and external water provider charge increases.
Thank you. Please vote.
Motion approved, 4-1. Rodriguez, no.
Thank you. We're pretty much at the end of the council meeting. We do have general council member comments, if any of the council members would like to say a few words at this time. I don't see anyone ready to say anything, so I'm going to go ahead and adjourn this meeting until next Wednesday, which is a mayor-council workshop at 2:00 p.m. next Wednesday, November 10th, 2021, to discuss solid waste regulations and the proposals received for solid waste recycling and organics collection and processing. Thank you very much. Good evening.[1780.14][1780.14]